This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one work session on ARPA funding to order at six thirty-five, meeting called order. Are there any additions or removable items for the agenda tonight? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda for this evening? Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I'll move that we accept the agenda as written.
So moved, Counselor Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving into new business. Presentations and discussions, ARPA funding options. Turn it over to Josette.
Our first presentation's gonna be from TextMyGov, so Stephanie's gonna let them be the presenter. And you wanted Carson, correct? Carson? Yeah.
Hey, guys, sorry, I'm new at this with this go-to meeting, so hopefully I can figure this out. Let me share my screen with you guys here. Okay, can everybody see now?
Yeah.
The TextMyGov version of iWork here.
We can see it.
Okay, okay, perfect. Well, just as quick introductions, my name's Carson, I'm one of our technical experts at TextMyGov. And then with me as well is Russell Murphy, he's my account executive over Oregon, so he specializes working in your guys' state. And then I'm just here to kind of answer questions, run through the platform, go in the ins and outs of how it looks from a citizen's end, as well as what it looks like from the city side. So here in a moment, I'm also gonna put a phone number up on my screen and give you guys the opportunity to text into the program, so you can see what it looks like from a citizen's end. So if you have your cellphones available with you, great, you can go ahead and text in. And then Russell's also created some examples for you guys, you can kind of see how that looks. And if you guys have questions, put them in the chat, or you can interrupt me. I want to make sure we get the most out of the time, but I'll be conscious of your guys' times, I know you guys have other things on the agenda, but we appreciate you guys letting us take the opportunity to show this here. So as far as our company background goes, so TextMyGov, we're a division of a company called iWork Systems. We've been around since two thousand and one, we only service local government. So these products that we offer are specifically for cities, counties, all across the US. iWork Systems provides like a community development and a Public Works type software. And then TextMyGov is our citizen communication tool done via texting. So we're growing rapidly on the TextMyGov side, you know, we've been around a little over three years, but we've got a little over three hundred customers, quite a few just in your guys' state that are using this platform. But really, the reason that we came out with texting is we just found that technology, of course, has changed, and one of the most preferred methods of communication today is texting. And so this program is specifically designed for municipalities to have a two-way tool. So essentially, what that means is we provide a local number for citizens to be able to text into and ask questions and get automated responses, as well as report any type of issues through the platform. And then also, on the other end of the system, the city can push information out to their citizens about what's going on within the city. So, you know, whether that's a water main break, or, you know, an upcoming event, or whatever it may be, you guys can push text messages out as well. A few other things that just make us unique with this platform is we're highly configurable. So we work with agencies that are five hundred in population, all the way up to a couple hundred thousand. And there's really two reasons we can do that, just behind the configurability of our platform. As you guys will see, the backend of our system, we wanted to make it so, you know, an agency of two thousand population that we know doesn't have an IT staff could manage this system, that you don't have to have any type of IT background. So keep in mind, everything's configured around your guys' needs. And then for your citizens, there's no download needed. So I mentioned earlier, but we purchase a local area code number for you all. So then it's local and familiar to your citizens, and then they just text it like they would any other number in their phone there. And then Russell's already provided this, but with our annual fees, we like to mention that those have not increased over the past twenty years for our current customer base. So once you guys sign on with us, we keep those fees consistent year after year, so you don't have to go back and re-budget for that. And then it is unlimited users, so anybody within the city that would want to have access to our backend of the system will offer that access too. And then we assign an account manager to every account, and they're there to train your staff and then give ongoing, continuous support, as long as you guys are customers with us there. That's just quickly our company background. What I'd like to do now is just give everybody the opportunity to text into the program. So me and Russell, we're in northern Utah, but that's why that area code's a little bit different. But I want you guys to go ahead and just start by texting "hi" to that number, and I'll give everybody a second to go ahead and text into that. And then I'll give a couple examples to have you guys text into that number as well. And then as you guys start to get that "hi" back, the two examples that I'll have you text into is, one is, "When is the dump open?" So again, that's just, "When is the dump open?" And then Russell just created a reply there that kind of gave the citizens some information on the dump for your guys' citizens. And then after you text that in, if you want to go ahead and just text "report" to that number, that'll be like a citizen wanting to report an issue through the platform. So if they text "report," it'll ask them what type of issue they'd like to submit. And this just gives some examples, right, these are completely configured. But, you know, you could walk through and say "pothole" or something like that, right? That's always a common one, so if you want to text "pothole" to it, it'll then walk you through a couple steps of, "What's the location? What's your name? Would you like to upload a picture?" It essentially walks them through three steps of asking them about that pothole and the information that would be required by the city to submit that request through. So again, just those two examples that you want to, if you want to text in, is, "When is the dump open?" And then the other one is texting "report" and walking through those questions. So and again, essentially, what you guys are seeing there is two of the main functions of our system, which is citizens texting in to find information. So what's common questions, you know, typically when we build out a system initially, we say, you know, "Okay, what's your top twenty-five questions that come into your city?" And then we create replies to those questions. And through our setup process, we're helping you create these replies. So again, I'm not having to do anything on my end for you guys to receive those replies, these are all predetermined responses. So essentially, our goal with the platform is to add a twenty-four-seven secretary to your agencies, because citizens can text into this number whether it's on a Sunday, or if it's at midnight, right? And they can get replies to these responses when you guys don't have staff in, you know, available to take those calls. So that's essentially the citizens texting in. What I want to jump into now is what it looks like from the city standpoint, so the backend of our system. Everybody should be seeing now where it says "Guest Dashboard" here. So this is the backend of the system, as you'll see here, mine says "Guest," right? But for you guys, it's in Sabrina, and then have all your information in it with your local number. This will show you, you know, here's how many messages are being used per year. Down here is like my recent log, over here in the top right-hand corner. I'm just gonna close out of this real quick. So everything in our system is also FOIA compliant. So we know that open records is huge when it comes to local government. So if you ever need to export any type of message log out of here for an open record type request, you can easily kick data out of the system. And then again, down here is like my recent logs, and this is where we store all the internal data. So as I open this up, you guys will probably see a lot of your messages that you've been texting in here. So again, I can see like, "When is the dump open?", I can see the phone number that's texted into the system. I can view that conversation here and say, "Okay, here's the sent and received, you know, messages that are coming up." Sorry, I'm trying to minimize my screen so I can see everything here with the meeting, so give me a second, guys, sorry.
It's weird, my number shows up wrong.
Oh, is one of your, so you're saying like, it's not the correct number here?
Yeah, the seven oh seven, that's not me.
That's me.
Oh. Sorry.
There's a few of you guys in here, so, you know, as you'll see, I've got a lot, you know, I'm assuming all the five oh threeers are you guys, but, right? But again, I can come in here and say, "So this one's a great one, right? One of you guys said 'pothole,' and if I view this, this is everything that was sent in. You said Casey Road, what's your name, Stephanie, she included a picture on this one too, so this is a great example. If I click on this picture, I like that. So you can see there's a picture that comes in through with that request too. And then one thing with these reported issues is we can also email these. So when they get sent over, right, we know that there's gonna be certain recipients that are supposed to be handling these pothole requests. So on our backend of our system, we have what's called the setup of these categories. So essentially, the categories are the different departments within your city. Now, maybe you guys have one category for everything, that's totally fine. But as you'll see in mine, I've got like category animal control, category code enforcement. Down here is just my general report one, right? So if I come to this and hit this little edit icon, this is where we set up the recipients of any time somebody texts in "report" into my demo site. And for us, that's like potholes, streetlights, things like that. But as you can see here, here's my email recipients that are receiving those. So again, this is me, and then this is Russell, that are receiving those emails. And then we can set up text recipients, so we have some agencies that, you know, "Hey, our guys are out in the field quite a bit, they want to receive a text message when these new reports come through." So we can also add them as text recipients if you'd like. So that's kind of the reported issue side. With these reported issues that also come through, Russell, I wasn't sure how you guys are tracking those today, so just as a quick overview of that, if you guys did want to track statuses on these reported issues, like, you know, "Hey, this is a pothole that came in, you know, I need to go ahead and sign that to Public Works now." I can go ahead and put that as the status, and now that's assigned to, if I scroll that down, to Public Works here. Now, if I was Public Works and you guys want to give them access to this backend of the system too, and I said, "Hey, I need to reply to this citizen, letting them know we're coming out to fix that pothole", I would just come here again, hit "reply", say, "Hey, we are coming out to fill the pothole. Thank you," or letting us know. Or maybe I needed more information, you know, maybe the address they gave me wasn't a full address or something like that, and I wanted to say, "I need them to reply," I can go ahead and select a waiting reply. But for this example, you know, I would just hit "send" now, and that would go off to that person, you know, letting them know that, you know, we had, that we're coming out to fix that pothole. So again, this is our log, everything's stored internally here, and that's more of the reported issue side. The next portion I want to show you is just where we set up the answers to these questions. So just like you guys said, texted in, "When is the dump open?", this is where we create what we call these one-response words or answers to questions. So you'll see in my backend of my system, I have everything from like agenda to bill pay to birth certificate. Now, these ones are all really common, you know, we're demoing cities and counties across the US, but we have templates that we use to say, "Hey, here's what's common questions that are coming into, you know, agencies around you guys." And then each one of these has, as you can see, replies over here on the right-hand side. We can do multi-language responses, really, there's no limit to what these replies can be that are being sent back to the citizens. And then just for time's sake, the last portion of our system is the notification side, so this is pushing information out to your citizens. So essentially, what we do is we create groups for you. Now, with an agency of your size, we could just say, "Hey, we're gonna create one group for everything," and that's initially what most cities will do, is create one group. And then if they do want to, you know, individualize different groups by what's being sent out, you can. But you can see in mine, I've got everything from like city alerts to Main Street to even staff members. So maybe you guys want to have like an internal council messaging group, or like, you know, an internal staff group, you could do that too. And then how the citizen signs up is very easy, so we wanted to make the signup process really as simple as we could, so they don't have to download anything again, they don't have to create a username or password, they just sign up through this keyword. So for my city alerts, they just text "city one," and then that signs them up to start receiving city alerts from the city at that point. And then once you guys are ready to send a message out, you just simply come over here and select your group. So if I said "staff members," and you know, just since we're in a council meeting, I would come in here and say, you know, "Reminder, council is tonight. Please join us here." And then I could say, "Okay, here's my link to our joint meeting," and you can go ahead and include that. And then I would hit "send message," and that would go out to everybody in my staff members group there. So really, everyone, at a high level, that's the three main functions of our system. The next portion that I want to show here, just gonna close out of this picture and open a new tab. So every agency that we work with, we provide what's called a media kit. So we know the success of this program is really based around your citizens knowing about it. And so this is Crestwell, Oregon, they're one of our oldest customers on this platform in your state. But as you can see on their website here, we have this little widget in the corner. So part of our media kit is a widget for your website, and then we also provide downloadable flyers. So those flyers can be used throughout City Hall, you can put them on social media, wherever you guys would find that'd be most effective. And then this widget, as you can see on their website, it says, "TextMyGov, give a phone call, use your mobile phone's text messaging to find answers to your questions, text "hi" to the city of Crestwell, and then here's their local number there." And then if you hit "more info," it'll just show a brief, you know, idea of how they can use it, you know, "Text in report" like you guys had, or "Text in contact, bill pay, you know, news, jobs," shows them a few examples of how they can use the system there. But everybody, that's really what I was hoping to show at a high level today. I'd love to answer any questions, so if you guys do have any questions, I'm open to answering those now, or if you guys want me to show anything in more detail, I'm happy to go back into the demo site as well.
Oh, thank you, Carson.
Yes, no problem, thank you guys for allowing me to take some time here.
I have a question, Carson, what are the annual, this contract on an annual basis yearly, or what are the fees per year?
Yes, yeah, so it is an annual fee, I'm gonna let Russell, I'm gonna divert to Russell on that, because he's the one that's been dealing with the agreement with you guys. But it is based on an annual fee, so Russell, I think you have that over there, so if you don't mind just kind of briefly going over that and what the cost is for these guys.
Yeah, thank you, Carson, for showing that. So yeah, we have you right now priced at twenty-five hundred on an annual basis. And then that was going to be the thirty-two hundred, we did discount that down to twenty-five hundred for you guys, and then we did discount the initial setup fee, so that first year, there is an initial setup fee of a thousand dollars, just to get everything set up and ran for you guys and get you guys going. So the first year would be the thirty-five hundred dollars, and then every year after that would be the twenty-five hundred. That does include, you know, the local phone number, the short code numbers, unlimited training, staff support, and the twenty-five thousand text messages per year, so.
So there's a cap of twenty-five thousand text messages?
So, you know, we never want you guys to run out of text messages. You guys can always purchase more if you'd like, I think for twenty-five thousand more, it's three hundred dollars. But if you think, you know, that that's gonna be an issue, you know, going into the contract, you know, just, we're more than happy to talk about that and increasing it, because we're not a text messaging company, we're a software company. So we can definitely, you know, if we need to look at that further, we could definitely do that, so.
Maybe to answer the question, how many hits did Crestwell get in a year?
Boy, great question, I don't know, Carson, you might know that a little bit better.
Yeah, so Crestwell's using, and I believe, I believe they're a little bit larger than you guys, but I believe they're using somewhere around twenty to thirty thousand is their average right now, that they're using on an annual basis. And again, I think we actually provided them, so to give you guys some idea, we basically amount of text messages off your population, so from our research, what we find is twenty-five thousand, because if I have it correct, you guys are around two thousand in population, is that right?
Yeah, Crestwell's double us.
Yeah, yeah, so typically, an agency of anywhere from like, you know, honestly, a thousand to five thousand, we're usually providing around twenty-five thousand texts. And then from there, we usually up it to about fifty thousand. So as you guys grow, you know, potentially, you may need more, but, and then there's no expiration on them too. So say, "Hey, the first year you guys use," maybe you do see a lot, and you see you use twenty thousand. Those additional five thousand would roll over to your next year, so there's also no expiration on any unused messages.
Well, part of my question there was, I wanted to know how much people were actually using it there in Crestwell, so it sounds like quite a bit.
Yeah, they're one of our early adopters, they've done a really good job. And one of the biggest things that they did, you know, not only that widget like I'm showing here, they also pushed it really hard on like their social media, and then they used our flyers, where they actually printed them out and put them out in like a utility bill. So that's definitely something I would recommend to you all, you know, if you're open to it. You know, really, the more you can get it out to your citizens, the better. We find that the interaction is really there if the citizens can know about it. Great questions, anything else that we can answer?
Does your company also set up the categories for us?
We do, yeah, so when an agency signs on with us, our goal is to get an agency live within about thirty days. And so we assign an account manager to the agency, and they work hand-in-hand with whoever's gonna be on the implementation side of you guys on the city. So usually, we ask for at least two contacts to be over implementation on your side. And then they work with our account manager, and we try and meet with them about two times every week. Usually, it's about thirty minutes on an initial training, and then a fifteen-minute follow-up call. And then at the end of every week, they'll send an email summary of what went over. But we try and get you live in about thirty days, and so with that, we, yes, we provide templates of the categories. We provide what other agencies are doing as far as like answering those different questions that come in, and to try and make that setup process really as easy as possible.
Yeah, I noticed one of the text messages tonight was, "I need a beer." And, I mean, are there quite a few texts like that that are of no value to anyone?
You know, you know, we're finding that it kind of ranges right from agency to agency. You know, there is a very, you know, we can create like trigger words for agencies that the reply can be like, "Hey, this is not what the system's used for, you know, please text in one of these options," right? And we do have the ability, if we need to block numbers, because every once in a while, like, you'll see that I have spam numbers texting in, right? But I think that "I need a beer" one might be a valid, you know, question to come in.
I wanted to see what it would bounce back.
Yeah, that's awesome. So that's an unrecognized text too, so as you saw there, let's just open that up. So you said, "I need a beer," right? So this is a great example, especially initially with the program, we know you're not gonna know everything that citizens want to text in about, and so as you guys see here, this is my customized response. Again, we customized to what you guys want, but mine says, "Sorry, we didn't find a match. These answers from our website might be helpful." So if you guys would like us to, we can initially link it to your internal search of your website. This is Marysville, Ohio, one of my current customers, so as you'll see there, you could click on that link, and it'll bring you back to that website to search that. Or we can just have like, or text one of the following, and it could be like FAQ, and then it's a list of options, right? Or they can text "contact," and it could say, "Here's, you know, our main line number." And then my last option is, if you're not finding what you're looking for, text "chat." Now, this part's completely voluntary, because some agencies are like, "Yeah, we don't, we don't want to open it up to a live chat through the system, we want them to just call if they don't find what they're looking for," which is totally fine. But if you did want to be able to chat with them through here, we could have them text "chat," and then it could notify an internal staff member with an email that somebody had requested a chat, right? And then I could come in here and start replying to them and have more of a one-on-one conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, this answer, this question could be for Carson, it could be for our city administrator, it could be for Stephanie, but if you, if we got around twenty-five thousand a year, you're talking four hundred and eighty emails every day of the year to log through, typically, how many of those are gonna need responses? Or was it just gonna be set up to give out a response automatically? But then you talked about replying like to potholes and stuff, so Joe said, is it your intention that the Public Works ones go to Jeff directly?
Not initially, it won't. So my intent was, to start, was more of informational. So those things that we repetitively see on Facebook, can you not hear me?
Yeah, it's hard to hear.
So the things we repetitively see coming across Facebook, questions, or all of that kind of stuff, we wanted it to be more of a pushed-out informational. There is a section, and maybe Carson can show it to us, where, and I think maybe Russell and I back and forth it, but it said like, "Here's the contact information for that department." Did you guys? There was one that basically, if it sends something on, if they, if we don't have the answer in an already-built bullet, it would say, "Contact City Utilities at the phone number and an email." So those initially would be the only emails we would get, would be from citizens that the platform didn't answer their question, and we wanted them to have connections straight to a city employee via phone or email.
Yeah, and I can kind of jump in there too, so I think it was Allen that asked the question, right? Yeah, yeah, so Allen, so.
JR.
Oh, JR, so JR, so with these one-response words here, these are all, these ones are all not replying, these aren't sending an email to anybody, because these are just replies to that question. So like, when you guys texted in, "When is the dump open?", nobody received an email on that, right? Because they just texted in, "When is the dump open?", and, you know, here was their reply, right? So for the most part, most of these are not sending emails. We only have it set up to where the ones that are sending emails to internal staff is when they are like reporting something of like, you know, a pothole or something like that. But if Josette and her team, you know, if you guys initially want it to just say, "Hey, maybe they text in 'pothole,' and it says, 'You need to contact Public Works Department, here's their office hours, Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, here's their direct line,'" that could be the reply, they don't necessarily have to report it through, you know, TextMyGov. We have the ability to eventually open it up to that. But is that kind of what you were, because again, this is completely customized to what you guys want to accomplish, but hopefully, that kind of answers the questions there.
Well, I've seen this basic kind of system, I believe Portland has something where any citizen can go on, type in "a pothole," and it goes straight, right to the Public Works Department and gets taken care of, one way or another. So I'm just worried that if everything goes to City Hall, and there's hundreds of texts coming through a day, it's just gonna get lost in your noise. And I'm just kind of wondering how it's gonna be implemented. And I don't know why Public Works wouldn't have visibility of it. Or is that something you want to hand out yourself, Joe said, is that what I'm hearing? I've really had a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, so I just, I don't want to inundate Public Works initially. I think it's totally doable that they could get a text that says "pothole" and whatever. The tricky thing is, is I don't want them kind of inundated with it. It's more of like, get the informational out there, get people using it to get information or get directed to correct information via the website, or a department phone number, or whatever they need. And then over time, yeah, I think they could totally use it to get a text with the information, what they need to go check out.
And then what if it's police-related, because people will like report disturbances if they get this system going. They probably told not to, but they will, I mean, what happens there where, you know, noise complaints and that little stuff that's gonna come through here, is it gonna get routed to chief? Or is everything's gonna come only to you?
No, it doesn't come to me, so the thing that we're trying to do with, say, someone was like, "Dog barking, night dog barking," or something is the words they typed in, this system would catch any of those words and would say, "If you have a late-night complaint, please call the emergency, you know, non-emergency dispatch number at blah, 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 blah." They could touch that number and instantly be talking to non-emergency dispatch to tell the police officer how we, in the process we normally use, which is the non-emergency dispatch, that there's something going on tonight. So it just directs people, I'm not seeing as it is taking anything in and holding it, and then we have to direct things. We're gonna use it in the capacity of that it diverts people to the information source they're looking for, whether it's a phone number, an email, dispatch, whatever. Information about the dump, information about city halls closed, and vice versa. So like with the smoke testing, anybody, say we were already signed up, anybody that signs up for city alerts, we could have sent out a smoke testing text that said, "Hey, the city's gonna be doing smoke testing in this neighborhood today, blah, blah, blah." More just back-and-forth information at the initial startup. I think we could get pretty deep in doing more of it, but this first year, I would see it as more information. I don't know if that answers your question.
Oh, it does. I still have a little bit of issue hearing, but that's just me, probably. But so it sounds like you just want to cut down on the call volume to City Hall, hopefully, and this takes care of people's repetitive questions.
Well, and the misinformation that goes out on Facebook, because sometimes, we're not on Facebook at work, and it will go twenty-seven comments before someone's like, "Call City Hall" to get the real story, if everybody and their brother given their version, where if someone, if we got people used to this, they could text and we could in the background, getting that information ready so that we're more available to the citizens. Kind of how I was seeing it. Because if we're all on the phone and someone calls here and we don't pick it up, then they may not even strive to get the correct answer. So...
But, yeah.
So I see two aspects to this for the city. One is better information to our citizenry, like you just alluded to. But JR hit on a point, which I think has value for us, is staff time. How often are you guys getting called for hours of the dump? How often does that happen? Josette?
I really, I really should have asked Cassandra, because she's the one that answers the 101 line. So it would be her that would know how often those weird questions that could be answered. I don't know, Dale.
Okay. But I mean, I see it all the time on Facebook, so I can only assume that they're also picking up the phone and calling City Hall. So there's the value for us, if we can free up staff time of these miscellaneous phone, you know, questions that this will cover. I mean, that's, that's part of the value for us, but also better customer service. And I suppose this will tie in somewhat with our emergency weather-type events. We'll have some pre-made ones you put in when we're... I mean, it'd be one, another avenue, I mean...
Yeah, so if you look there, it says "weather alerts" and it says "city weather." We could flood stages or any of that kind of stuff. And so, Carson, can you show where you can build like the year of state of statements? Like you can, in the background, you can, you could put multiple, have it kick out the alerts. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Like the scheduled notifications, like a future message?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, of course. Yeah, so this is like saying, "Hey, I'm sending one on the fly," right? Like, this is me coming in and sending one immediately right now. But if you guys said, "Hey, we've got an upcoming event," or like an election, or like, this one's really, really popular for like, everybody's always asking, "Hey, when is my recycling being picked up?", right? So like, this would be a great one to come in here and say, "Okay, you know, every week, we're going to send out, or maybe every two weeks or once a month, we're going to send out a message about recycling reminder." Or, you know, you know, "We just had, you know, Labor Day," right? So maybe we're letting them know that the change of time, or, or not the change of time, the change of, you know, garbage being picked up. So you can come in here, pre-select a date and time of your message, or maybe it's a Saturday message, right? Nobody's going to be in the office on Saturday. So we'll come in here, put that in your time zone, and then you'd come in and just start putting your message here in the body, whatever you're going to be sending out there. Hit "Create Message," and that, then that's going to be a pre-created message that's going to be going out, you know, on the eighteenth at 8:00 a.m. there.
So we could do like all the city hall closures. We could do when the hazardous waste collection's coming. Kind of all that stuff that we try to put on Facebook, but no one shares the city of Veronia's information, and very few people are hooked to our Facebook page. So, you know, Stephanie could do future meeting messages, councils' meetings, or councils canceled for this, or closed for this holiday, or whatever. You could really build a whole bunch of it that's just happening in the background, giving people information that have signed up to be part of getting information. And it's kind of not, we don't have to keep all that in our heads. We could do it just from the platform. So that's kind of what I liked about it, because, you know, in November and December, the dump days switched, right? They switched to First and Third to avoid the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. So stuff like that, that we could put in there and then not have to worry about not getting out there to the public. That's one element of it I thought would be beneficial to us.
Dale?
Yeah, so I guess I didn't understand upfront that this actually pushes out alerts. So if they sign up to the system, they get the number and put "high" in there. Now, they're basically signed up to the system, right? And then, if we send out an alert... So that, that, that kind of might even be better. Do we do the reverse 911 calls?
We do. That's really specific for fire and police and emergency management. So we are on that CAN system.
Right. Does that cost us?
It doesn't. But we don't have the right, as the city, to push something. It has to be through fire or police.
Right, okay. But this thing, we could push out some alerts.
Yeah.
You know?
And then the other thing, Carson, could you show? So the newer generations are all into kind of QR codes. Could you show one of your flyers with the code on it?
Yeah, of course. Let me show you. We call, I think it's Santa Maria is the most recent one that we created. So, yeah, we set you guys up with our marketing team. They're great. I've got a couple of girls over there that do a really, really good job. So let me show you this one. These guys are in California, but this is their Recreation and Parks Department that we were working with. So let me make this a little bit bigger. And sorry, guys, I'm working on a laptop tonight, so I, I usually have two screens and I'm a lot more efficient. But so as you guys see here, they've got like Text Your Recreation and Parks. They've got a high Spanish population there, too. But then one thing I really liked is we did this QR code. So they've got, scan this QR code, and then that brought, plops that number right into their phone, right? And then we even did a vanity number for them, too. So like for their number, it was 804-214-PLAY, because they, again, that's specifically for their Recreation and Parks that we're working with there. Yeah, this is an example of one of our flyers.
You know, and then you could, we could make a winter weather flyer that says, you know, "Stay apprised of, you know, any flood-related information," and put a QR code and get people signed up to start getting those so that we're kind of in real-time telling the citizens, "Hey, get prepared. It should, could be flooding in low-lying areas," or whatever the, the weather services, you know, risk level thing is. So there's some benefit that way, too, for citizens, just to kind of stay apprised of, "Hey, it might flood my area."
Any other questions or discussions? JR, go ahead.
I'm going to go back. Josette, when I look up there on your website, that's why I kind of got excited about this a while ago. There's three main functions to this. One is to communicate, the other one is engage, and the other one is boost website traffic. And when you read there, "Engage," it says, "Using smart texting technology to engage with citizens. Citizens can easily report code violations, public works issues like potholes, sign-down, drainage problems, tree trimming, sewer smell, and more. Agencies can engage with citizens, start a workflow, and ask specific guided questions regarding location, address, street name, and more." And I'm kind of back to my first question is, if they're not routed to the departments, someone's got to read through all these and decide which one to engage in. And I'm worried that nothing like that's going to happen. And I'm wondering what we're getting, you know, what... A third of this is kind of missing for me, and I just want to know how, why it can't be implemented to where people feel like they can just go on here and text, "I have a giant pothole and I can't get on my driveway right behind Oregon."
No, I'm not saying they can't, JR. I would say my initial, the initial rollout of it was more of a back-and-forth kind of built message and response system. We can send those alerts to any email we want. We can create a Public Works, TextMyGov@Veronia-or.gov, where one Public Works person, that is, their job is to review any emails that come to that and respond. I mean, that's simple. That's not, I don't have any fear about, because you can, you can decide who's going to see that email, right? You could build it so that if it's one person's job duty is to make sure all of the emails from TextMyGov are handled in the week, then that's their job duty. That's totally doable.
I'm sorry, your connection's not very good for me.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, I think you're closer to the mic.
So I, you can develop on the backside where the emails go. Say they do a pothole email. We don't have to just put it to one of the emails we currently have. We could make a special email so that one Public Works person's job is to check in that email and make sure all of those things have either a work order's been printed for it, or, or they've gone and done it and respond. Carson, will you, will you show the, how you check that it's been done once you, once you assign it to Public Works, how they would go into the system? And I could be able to see that they accomplish it?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So if we had Public Works in here, right, so we could create statuses or assignments. So on my right-hand side here, I think for you guys, it's left-hand side, but you'll see I've got status types, or also, we can call them like assignments, right? We can build these out to really say whatever you'd like. So if I say my Public Works was in here, or my Code Enforcement, and they'd say, "Hey, I want to see everything that's assigned to me," right? So I'm going to come in here and search "Public Works." And then from here, okay, here's everything that's now been assigned to Public Works. So if I'm a guy that goes out and fixes potholes, I said, "Okay, let's go ahead and view this one." Now, I would have got an email with this already, too, so maybe I already know most of this information. But if I said, "Okay, this one's completed out now, I'm going to go ahead and put this completed," or, you know, again, whatever you guys want that status to be, or, you know, maybe it then goes to, you know, Josette, and she could have it say, you know, "Have it assigned to me at that point, you know, once you've completed that out." But I can come in here, hit "Complete Now," and now that one's dropped off my list, right? So that's the reason I can't see it now, but now that one's dropped off. But if I went to all my "completed" now, that one will now be over in my status of "completed" of those different work orders that have been completed in here.
Yes, we can totally earmark it to go to the, like, Code Enforcement. Those would just go to Eva. She's at her computer. She can deal with them, create work orders, complete them, mark them, complete it. Public Works, since Jeff is the Public Works male, we would probably create a new email and have one of the younger guys be tracking that so that with all of Jeff's departmental supervisor stuff, it's not getting lost in there, right? We would just have a specific email for Public Works where one, whoever's on that week or working the weekend, that's their week to do all the TextMyGov assignments or get them rolling or whatever. It's pretty, it would be easy.
So do I understand this right? They're not going to pull up and look at what we're looking here? It's going to divert the ones that are in one category and send emails to somebody? And it's not going to pop up a log, just like we're looking at?
They, the person that's in charge of having the jobs to do will get an email and will also have a way to log into this platform and look at their log. Yeah. They'd have both.
And here's an example of like, I'm just searching "pothole" in my system, right? So I'm the recipient of potholes right now. So this is what an email looks like when it, so maybe for you guys, right? You don't want to have some of the people in the back and managing it. Maybe you just want them to receive the email, and that's it. And then they can manage those requests how they'd like at that point. But here's an example, like Mike says, "New pothole request." And I think this is actually one of your guys' that you submitted, but it's got that number that submitted over, Casey, Nate, or on Casey Road. Stephanie submitted that, and then again, here's that picture that she submitted over. So here's that example of what that email can look like when it sends over internally to your staff. And again, it goes, it can go to multiple recipients. So maybe like Josette wants to keep track of, make sure these are being followed up on. You know, you could CC multiple people, or, you know, you can have multiple recipients on each one of those. And they can be specific to what's being submitted, right? So your pothole people can get the potholes, animal control can get the animal control ones. It doesn't have to go to everybody. It can go to specific recipients.
I think it's a pretty cool thing if everybody is on board and everybody's linked in. I think it could... It definitely could organize and save a lot of time. And if everybody had visibility in each department, we kind of use some similar things like this. Apps at the airport, because we're so spread out that it takes a while to get to know them and use them. But once it's up and running, it's pretty darn handy. So I see the value in it if, if for Veronia, if Public Works is engaged in it somehow. That's kind of where, and I realize it'd probably be slow to get started, but...
Well, and that's the thing, with the person going to receive them, having them at the beginning stages, helping to develop the different parts of it and the questions you're asking, that's really valuable, too, because some people put "Casey Road." Maybe, "What, where is this at?" And then if they don't give you an address, say, "Can you give us the nearest address?" You know, there's questions I wouldn't think of that Public Works might think of in building what we're going to get from the customer or the citizen that would be really most helpful for them. So having them be part of the building is also going to be good.
Yeah, I see it two ways. I see it as an informational output only, if that's the way you want to use it, or actually see it as a tool to let citizens report issues. And that's a completely different setup, so...
No, I see it as being both. I think initially, I saw it as kind of getting people used to it as a platform.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely. You have to put the input into all the information you want to bounce back, though, right?
Yeah.
That's all I meant by it's two different kind of setups. I mean, with after-hours numbers and all that, you can use another city's template on questions and key words, but you still got to put our names and numbers and after-hours and messages and...
Right. And a lot of it, you can put links back to the website. So if it's agenda or minutes or city council, we can link them and they can click on the link right in their phone. It'll take them to the city's website, show them the minutes or agendas or who the council members are on your page of you guys with your pictures and specific emails, so we can really kind of network everybody together without kind of a vacuum of misinformation where we're not looking, basically.
So this will be linked to the city website page and the Facebook page?
Yeah, so in the, in the, can you show an agenda one, Carson?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Text?
Is it just under like city information, or?
No, on, on TextMyGov, the agenda had a link to the, to the website, is what I'm trying to show Counselor Allen.
Yeah, I'm on your website. Where do I go to see like an agenda or like an upcoming? Like, can I link it somewhere from your website?
Yeah, government, then city council.
Yeah.
Next one down, click the Mayor's City Council.
Agenda's a minute.
They have to scroll down, which was kind of weird on this one.
Okay, and then this is all the previous minutes and agendas, or upcoming minutes and things, okay?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I could, I can do this page, or I could do like, you know, I could do, you know, a specific one. If you guys wanted to change it every time, you of course could, but let me... If you guys wanted to change it every time, you of course could, but let me copy this. All right, guys. And again, I'm working on laptop here, so I'm super inefficient right now, so. So then I'm going to come back in here to my setup and come to my one response words. And I've already got one in here, right? But I, you see, I've got agenda and then I've got trigger words of minutes in here, right? So I'm going to go ahead and just swap this link out that I currently have in here. And then. Okay. So now, if you want to go ahead and text into that same number you guys have been texting, just text in agenda or minutes, either of those, agenda or minutes, or you could say, I want to know about the agenda or I want to know about last night's minutes, as long as it includes something like that, it should kick you back a reply there.
It's the fastest I've ever got a response from the government.
That's the whole goal, right? And does that link work? Okay, JR and the others?
City Council agendas and minutes, Google Drive, and it looking, works perfectly. Very good.
Perfect. Awesome. Yeah, so that's really how easy it is. I could have walked you guys through creating new, but it's really simple too, right? So if I hit add new here, this is where I would start creating it from scratch. So I would just say agenda. Now, I already have it in here, but I could say, you know, and I could say maybe like city council meets, you know, the second and, you know, fourth Monday of every month. At, at, you know, 6:30 and then maybe you guys would want to put, you know, other contact or you want to put the upcoming link. And then you could also put in that link to the upcoming agenda. So these replies are completely customized to you all.
So we could have the keyword flood and have it linked to the fire station website, Josette?
Yeah, you can send them, their links can be wherever. It can say, for flood information, see Vernonia Fire in their link. See the, the USGS Rivergate page in that link. You can do multiple, you can put anything you want in there.
Right, yeah, it looks pretty easy. I like it. I like that part of it where it links you to more information. I mean, that's the key, right? Not just to get a response back, thank you for your text, and then they never see what happens. But if they get, goes to a number and they don't hear nothing back, then they're going to call Public Works or they're going to call City Hall in a few days, say we never heard back or.
Right.
Well, that really works, Carson. I'm sorry for interrupting you, JR. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say I texted agenda meeting minutes for September 7th and I clicked on and I got them right away. I mean, it's pretty amazing.
Good. No, I'm happy to hear that. Hopefully, I'm loving that you guys are seeing the value here. And yeah, you know, these, these can have anything created behind them, right? You know, although I linked it to your guys' city website, maybe it is linked to your Facebook page. Maybe it's linked to a state page, right? You know, I've got over four pages of examples of what citizens can text in here. But, and again, we help you guys create these, right? So don't feel like you have to recreate the wheel. You know, we'll be here to help you and say, here's some of the most common questions that come into our agencies. And then you guys will also have some insights built in, right? Of like, hey, what's our top 10 text messages that we're getting or, you know, what's our top 10 unrecognized text messages? Like, you know, what are people not getting replies to? And you can come in here and view those too, right? So we know that that's important to make sure replies are happening. So, you know, we try and build it out in those ways that you can also develop it as it grows.
Because you could even, one that just came to my mind was the one, the unrecognized was power outage. They could put power outage and we could say, if you're experiencing outage, please call West Oregon Electric at this number. To report the outage. I mean, we can kind of, the ones that we're getting that aren't really ours, we can help even further by directing them to the appropriate place to get their answer.
Hey, Carson, one more question for you. Is there a limit on how many keywords and how many descriptions, links and stuff to go with those?
Yeah, great question. So, so this list here is completely unlimited. So, you know, I've got agencies that have built this out to 14, 15 pages, so there's no limit. The only limit, right, is you can't add something like, so like, say I tried to add like, you know, minutes to calendar here. Because I already have minutes in here, that's going to overlap with something. So if I tried to add that, it's going to give me a red flag up here telling me that already, you know, exists in my account. So as long as it doesn't already exist, you can create anything. And to answer your question, go back to that, there's, there's no limit. We don't cap that at anything.
So the same word in a phrase will screw you up? You try doing the same word in a three-word phrase or something?
Yeah, so, so for like example, right, if you texted in, you know, I want to know about last night's minutes, right? I can't, that's why I can't add minutes to like calendar because minutes is tying me back to agenda, you know, to the same information that agenda's going to. So, yeah, it'll stop you from trying to create an overlap word or like an overlap, you know, response.
But it'll highlight it for you and you could decide which one was more important and delete or change a different one, right?
Yeah, yep, exactly.
Okay. And do the, obviously the public is going to get charged for each text and is it a text charge coming back?
So the, the only reason the public would get charged, right, is if they're, if they don't have unlimited messaging on their phones. Like, say they're paying for text messaging, that, then they would incur a cost. And usually what we do is like when they box themselves in or they text in, we can say, hey, you know, data and message rates may apply, right, for the system. That could be like something in abbreviations. The, the cost is really on you all through what we, you know, like, like Russell had quoted you, right? We, we have you guys a $2,500 annual fee and that includes the 25,000 text messages per year. So the text messages are already covered.
Does it matter what carrier people are?
No, yeah, no, it doesn't matter what carrier you're with. There's no limit there, right, as far as carriers go.
Well, I wasn't worried. I was just saying access to it, but I imagine they all work.
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, it's just connected through the cell towers, right? So as long as they're in service, it's going to work. If they're, if they're not in service, then it's, then, you know, they would get a reply, you know, once they're back in service, but, you know, as long as they're in cell service.
Is there an email aspect of this, if somebody just wanted to email this platform?
Great question. You know, the, the only email portion we have is like that internal side, right? So this, your staff receiving emails and, and really, you know, nothing against emails, right? But we just have found, we used to offer like an app-based system and we went away from that and there was some email integration built in that. We just found texting has been a lot more successful. So that's why we've kind of committed ourselves to that. But yeah, to answer your question, then, oh, there's no, on the citizen's side, there's no them receiving emails.
It's, if, if my recollection is right, it seemed like I seen on another city platform similar to this that they could take a picture and send it right along with the text message so that people would have a picture of the actual problem.
Yeah, Stephanie did, but she didn't send a picture of a problem. She sent like a GIF off of her phone.
Yeah. Yeah, so I could show you one. I think most of mine are usually silly because I'm doing demos and then people just send whatever they find. But, but yeah, like if I come in here and search my Public Works ones that have been submitted. So let me see if this one has a picture. Nope, Jim didn't do a picture on his. But yes, they can include a picture, right? So we find that's really helpful, especially for your internal staff, if they can include a picture with it. But let me come back into my, so I think this, this is the one that Stephanie sent, right? So here's the email that it sent and then here's her picture right here. So if I click on that, this is the picture she sent that I had up earlier.
Right.
But yeah, essentially, right, we could send a, citizen could say, hey, here's the pothole and we know citizens never exaggerate. So maybe they say it's a 12, you know, inch pothole, but they send it over and it's, you know, a couple inches instead of, you know, the 12 feet that they had said. And you could try it out, PJR. If you want to text that report again, you could submit a picture with, if you want to try it out.
I'm trying it right now.
Going to send a picture, Charlie.
It takes a little bit longer to send a picture. It's going. There it goes.
You're on the wrong side of the hill there.
There, I got a reply. Sorry, didn't find a match. But at least you'll see the picture, the kind of beer I like.
Oh, so you did that. Okay, yeah, so I can come in here. Is this the one that you sent in right here? Oh, yep, you did right there. So, yep, if I click on that, there you go.
It'll show pictures or whatever, huh? There you go.
Yep.
I like that aspect. If you're reporting something weird in the city, the signs pour up, then you can see how bad it is, you know?
Yeah, and you guys can choose which issues have submitted pictures. So like if you say, hey, you know, on code enforcement, we're going to accept them, on potholes, we're going to accept them, but maybe on animal control or something we're not, right? So you guys can decide, you know, which ones are accepting pictures and which ones aren't.
And then you can open it up and there's 400 texts and you can sort by picture?
Yeah, you could search by images, right? If you wanted to just search by images in there.
I'm trying to think. It might be fun with morning coffee. What do you think, Josette?
I like it, but that's because I see the benefits for staff and kind of the misinformation vacuum. I'd like to start closing that gap between the citizens and the info we want them to have or be able to get.
And, and we'll have, and we're not going to shut down our city.
No, we keep all of it.
And they could all be linked or like that icon that was on there to drive people to this newer system. Like you say, the younger people like to text. In fact, I like to text because I am younger. Younger than Webb. Well, you guys have answered, you've answered all my questions. I thank you for doing that.
Okay, any other questions for Carson or Russell? Go ahead, Dale.
Well, I guess we heard 2,500 a year once we get set up. What's the guarantee for how far out?
Yeah, so like guaranteeing the price year after year? Is that, is that what you're asking, Dale?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so I will tell you, that's one thing that's pretty unique with our company. Most, most softwares, you know, you'll see an annual increase. You know, sometimes it's as low as 2%, sometimes I see them as high as 6%. We haven't increased our annual fees over the past 20 years. So text my gov is a newer platform under our, our, our sister company is called Iwork Systems. They've been around since 2001. I think I mentioned that earlier. And then text my gov has been around coming up on our third year. But we, we don't increase our annual fees once you're a current customer. I do have slight increases throughout the year for oncoming customers. And that's so I can keep up with our, you know, our updates and enhancements. But once you're a customer with us, we don't increase those fees. The only reason it would ever go up is if you guys had to purchase additional text messages.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I'd like to thank Carson and Russell for their information disclosed to us over the last hour. I hadn't really no idea what this entailed like I do now, and I, I really think it's a valuable tool for our citizens and for our staff too. So thank you for being with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you all again. It was really nice to meet you all and, and please, if there's any additional questions, if you're anything like me, I always think of 10 questions after meetings, so feel free to shoot them our way. We're happy to jump on additional calls, additional demos, let us know how we can help. But again, thank you all again and I'll let you guys get back to the rest of your meeting, so.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, moving on to Dude Solutions, Josette.
I'm not sure Nate or Chris, which one of you is wanting to present?
Yeah, so this is Nate Iker here, Senior Enterprise Account Executive for Dude Solutions and originated the conversations with Josette. Chris is going to dive into the tool today and he'll be able to show, you know, feature functionality based on the questions that you do have. But right now, what I want to do is just kind of take a pivot. Because what we're, what we're here as a company to do, you know, when it comes to our background is we've been around for 20 years. We have about 13,000 clients total, 3,000 of those being government clients. But where we'd really like to focus is asset management. Being able to capture very valid data around the infrastructure and life cycle of the infrastructure that we oversee as a community and then how do we best plan for that? Whether it's capital forecasting and building our, an effective CIP or, you know, how do we just know from a year-to-year basis, what does it look like on the stages of our infrastructure? And how do we plan for that for the future? So the platform that we're going to show you today is Asset Essentials. And it's basically gives you a way from a day-to-day perspective to capture not only what's happening, you know, on your infrastructure, but then also tracking and forecasting on the life cycle of that infrastructure. Are there any questions there before we, we kind of dive in? Okay, so Chris, I think if, if he can get the controls here, he'll be able to bring up Asset Essentials for you.
Absolutely. Is everybody able to hear me? Okay.
We can hear you. Steph, are you there? Okay, will you make Chris presenter?
Sorry, it took me a minute.
Okay.
All right, can I get a thumbs up if we're able to see the map? Perfect. All right, everybody. My name's Chris DeGenis. Nice to meet all of you. It's been interesting listening to your discussions. I really appreciate you inviting us here. And hopefully we can learn a few things from each other. So as Nate just mentioned, the platform I have pulled up for you right now is Asset Essentials. You'll see that in the upper-left here with me. And along the left navigation, you'll really see the primary components that Nate was just hinting at there in the introduction. So obviously I have this work order map for us up right now. The icons represent different work we've done around this particular town. So in this case, if I want to look here, I know I've got a lift station, right? So I can see past inspections, cleanings that we've done. Right, if I want to zoom in here, you can see along Academy Street. Looks like a trend or a cluster of work we've done. Yeah, so we've got some valve work here. But the idea is the work orders, the planned maintenance that we're going to schedule here within the system, we really want to start tying that back to the asset component that Nate mentioned early on. And these assets that we're going to talk about can take a lot of different forms and classes, okay? So part of the conversation we had with Josette was the GIS infrastructure. And Josette, can you remind me, I believe we talked about some of the sewer that you guys have in there already?
Yeah, so, forward is a project we're doing.
So any of that GIS infrastructure that you have now, for example, sewer, or, I mean, you can see here some of my other classes as you grow and if you evolve that GIS, we're able to bring any of those additional layers into this map. So now we're not just looking at a work order perspective, right? So if I drill in here, we can see our work, we're also able to see that GIS data that we're tracking in the system. So based on some of the questions I was hearing earlier to the previous presenters, there's definitely some Public Works interest. Who, who are my Public Works folks or that have some background in that?
You mean, interested in it would be probably Council Webb and Council Norman.
All right, perfect. So how, how much are you guys utilizing or are you familiar with that GIS data? So how, how much are you guys utilizing, or, or are you familiar with that GIS data right now?
Well, I use it every day.
Who else? Yeah, it looked like somebody else wanted to say something there? Is that Dale?
No, I'm good, I, I mean, we, we get presentations, uh, our guy that does the GIS for us.
Okay.
But that's about it.
Okay. So the idea here would be for my team that's in the field, right, anybody that's actually doing work and needs access to any of this information, they're able to pull it up on a mobile device, or a laptop like I have up in front of you, and we can start tracking any work that we're doing tied to our infrastructure. And that's just from a GIS standpoint there, right, the assets, like I mentioned, it takes a lot of different forms here, so we're also talking about building out our asset registry for things like our mechanical equipment. Any sort of fleet vehicles that we may be responsible for. Any of that GIS infrastructure that we're bringing in the map, right, we may wanna have all of this data available and start building out this wide-ranging asset registry. So we have one centralized location to start tracking not only the work that we're doing, but the details related to what we own and what we're responsible for. So for example, here within my registry, if I pick a piece of equipment, one of the first things that we wanna do is take whatever data that you guys have now, right, it may be in spreadsheets, sometimes it lives in our financial software. But if we can start building out the registry with our key life cycle details, and things like condition data, well then over time, what we discussed with Josette was, hey, let's start tying the work that we're doing, the time spent, maybe even the materials used. Because if we can start pulling this all into the equation right now, we're not stuck looking at just a financial formula, it's basically when the manufacturer is telling us how long they think it should last. Now we can actually start looking at real life cycle analysis based off of how much work we're doing, and what that actually looks like from a usage standpoint. I'm gonna pause for a second here, because obviously a very different discussion than you guys were having previously with the, with the other earlier presenter, so what sort of questions are we thinking about, or, or what do you want to dive more into with the context we have here?
Go ahead, Dale.
So, and, and I'm trying to wrap my head around this, I, I'm seeing this, our, our, all of our water meters would be going into this, I'm actually thinking when we repave a street, it goes in there, all the linear footage, all the, I, I mean, this, this would be our master tracking program here, I know Ben's been developing some stuff on his own, but I don't, you know, I'm just trying to think, you know, how this would be maybe more useful, or, or at least it would be in one database.
Yep, that centralization is the first step. Right, because I'm kinda laying some of the foundation here of what we're putting into the system, because the reports that we can run from here on out, right, we, we could spend hours discussing reports and looking at different analysis, but largely understanding why or what we're putting in here and what we wanna get out and what, why we wanna do it in the first place really helps to understand your goals and how we can help you accomplish that. Because there's a lot of different directions a platform like Asset Essentials can take. But once we get our assets in here, right, once we build out the asset registry as we call it, so you'll notice that theme throughout, but anything that I have in the system under any of my divisions that are relevant, at this point, now we're creating those PM schedules, any planned work that we need to do, let's define it within Asset Essentials, let's define how frequently it needs to be done. So I'm simply saying, hey, how frequently do we need to be reminded to do this? It's tied to this piece of equipment that we have in our asset registry, because that's serving as the backbone of how we're gonna start tracking this moving forward. And this plays really, this, this dovetails in here, I don't wanna, you know, step out of line, but this dovetails nicely in with your previous conversation you were having, because all of those requests that you're getting, all of those fires from the citizen's standpoint, that has an impact on your planned workload, right, that, that's way too familiar to everybody we're having in this discussion right now. So it's really hard to tell that story if we don't define what our pre-planned workload looks like, because I think everyone can agree, we wanna be good stewards of the tax base, right, we want to make sure we're cutting down on emergency failures, so if I can define, where that screen just opened for us here, if I can define what that workload looks like from a planned basis, right? This is all of the planned work we have to do this week. So where are the fires gonna fit in? Because everybody's understaffed and underfunded, preaching to the choir. So we need to change the discussion about what, what do we not do, or how do we do things differently with what we have.
And Chris, if you'll pause right there, one of the, one of the big things too, in, in talking to Josette, is you guys are a large part of the way there, in that you already have an asset registry with your GIS, so what we're saying then is layering our tool on top of this, we're able to then schedule out all of your preventative maintenance and everything attached to those assets now, so everything is carrying the history with it. So whenever you're looking at a particular waterline or a stretch of road, you know exactly what was done, it has associated costs to it, but it also has the PM maintenance that's gonna come up on that piece of in, infrastructure for the future. And now it's answering the question of, okay, I need to look at holistically, what does it take us from a PM perspective just to operate as a city? Just from PMs, that's not even reactive than what comes up from a daily perspective. Uh, that's what you see here with the work orders and the workload is, we're, we're able to see how many man-hours are we putting on our staff, you know, individually, whether it's PM versus reactive, but, you know, what is it, holistically, what does it take to run our city just from a day-to-day, keep things status quo perspective? And then take it a little deeper and say, okay, here's all the reactive work that's coming up now, how do we plan for that as well?
And one of the first data points you'll hear during implementation, that'll be discussed, right, i- it's building out that registry and setting your PM schedules, because one of the first things that we monitor for that success type of metric is gonna be your PM ratio. The closer you can get this to 75, 80%, that's when we actually start to see less emergency breakdowns, because let's face it, the PMs are the first thing to slip when the citizens are complaining about all sorts of things. So if we can get the buy-in at least internally, and, and I have clients that do share these metrics out publicly, now sure, they filter them a bit and show what they want, but again, it's about telling that story in a way we can get people to understand. So base level, looking at this PM ratio and building out that registry, so I can track the workload of the folks who have to do this scheduled work at some point. And when we look at that asset registry perspective, right, over time, we wanna track the work we're doing tied back to it. And we can bring the cost in on the back end of the system, we can track everybody's wage, right, so as they're giving us their labor hours, we're able to apply that to real labor cost. But again, if we're starting basic, just tracking the count at least would allow me to see where I'm spending the most amount of my time. Now, if we take that additional step and actually get into the cost tracking side of things, that's a much better real-world metric to look at. So when we shift this to cost, right, there's no way that fan power box should be at the top of my expenditures for my asset list, right? This makes a lot more sense, especially since we replace those doors. So right, this is the, in that crawl, walk, run, where we've all heard it before, but really how we approach implementation through how you evolve using it, because there's a lot of horsepower under the hood, but with very limited data entry, these are meaningful reports, right, back to that very first dashboard. We're looking at manpower and we're looking at PM ratios. So again, I'll pause for a second, uh, what sort of questions, uh, are y'all thinking about? Do you wanna dig more into some of the asset life cycle type of reports? There's a lot of ways we could take this.
Go ahead, Jared.
And my question was for Josette, what were you hoping to get out of this program?
So the equipment asset mapping, so we've talked about a few things. We don't have a regular maintenance schedule, we are currently a reactive, a reaction, reactionary mode, where something breaks, then it goes to the mechanic. The second thing was, is that map they showed you at first, where we were, where they had kind of all the work going on on the one road, we've been discussing this a lot in the streets inventory and with cracked ceiling, starting to document that work, and if a street looks like that, one that we just saw, perhaps that should be, rise up to the level of if we put that much work in it, it should maybe get paved over it, so it lasts a long time versus having a whole bunch of piecemeal work, and then we never pave over it and it just keeps continuing to deteriorate. So there's a few different layers that we've kind of been discussing internally, and this product seems to take care of, starting us down the, the path of being a city that's not reactionary anymore. For lack of a better, uh, description.
Yeah, uh, well, go ahead, Jared.
So when I see all this, I can see the value in it, be honest with you, Joe said, I don't know if our public work staff would have time or up to speed with the skills to implement this in a full range, or even a half range, uh, what's your thoughts on that? Who's gonna do the? Because if you're doing the work, then you gotta go to somebody else to input it, is it really helping us or slowing us down? That's what I'm kinda concerned of. Is the, who's implementing it, and is it gonna be the public works? Because I know we kinda do things old school, so.
Yeah, we're trying to slowly get away from the old school. Um, potentially what we've discussed, just initially, if you guys were to go with this, we would probably have Eulani do the inputting, the initial inputting of equipment, age, condition, serial numbers, you know, all of that, to get that based up, because you have public works. She would just be way more thorough at that, and in the wintertime, she has a good chunk of downtime, because code enforcement isn't the work it really is. So we've had her do that kind of data collection and, um, things like that in the wintertime. So that's who I initially see inputting the equipment. But then, when it comes to the work at hand, we already do work orders, a version of a work order, when we have the public works putting cracked ceiling this section of street or whatever, so that's not gonna be, it'll be a new format, but it's not gonna be unheard of to them, they currently do work orders. Um, the, uh, let me just, so currently, they're doing a work order like this. Right, where it's highlighted, where is it, who is it, is it priority, all the same kind of things, but they're doing a hard copy version right now, where this would be a little more streamlined, so it's not something they're not already kind of doing.
So do they have, they have laptops over there, or, or, or computers at public works?
Um, in, at the plant, Jeff has a computer setup, they have iPads, that's how they typically access the GIS data, the different meters to know if they need to shut off the meter, they can go to the house address, click on the meter in front of it, and it'll show the serial number, so they make sure they're turning off the right account or turning on the right account. So, um, they're already doing a whole bunch of these steps, this just kinda puts it all together where it becomes something meaningful for us, and my initial component with it that I loved was the planned um, equipment maintenance. That scheduling, it will kick out to them, hey, this needs to go to the small shop, and, and it can even be as simple as it's something we don't maintain ourselves, but it needs to go to the small engine repair, or it needs to go wherever for its tune-up, right? So we can just map all of that kind of expectation of work, so we're not missing those things, because he's right. When there's a water leak and someone's complaining about needing cold patch, if there was something to be maintained, it's just not made, it's just left in the shop, and I think we've just functioned for years like that. That the weed whacker doesn't work all of a sudden, instead of having it tuned up by one of our guys, or if, if no one does that, then taken somewhere for a tune-up, you know, there's just none of that happening right now, it's all kind of as it happens.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say too, when you, when you take a look at this, the, the asset lists and the GIS and those things, this is all part of our implementation, so what we're gonna do is, you guys have a lot of these things in Excel spreadsheets and things of that nature, during the implementation, we're actually gonna import those into the system for you, and then even the PMs, building out your PM schedules, we assist in that process, so basically our goal is that your public works team, their only job is to learn how to use something like the mobile app, and if there's a water main break, I go out, I touch a button, I say where it happened, and now that history is tied to the GIS. Because the problem now is, you get a water main break and someone gets out there and they're trying to figure out, well, is it ductile iron, what is it? I need to call into the office, someone's gotta pull this up on the GIS. What we wanna give these, these gentlemen and these ladies the ability to do is pull this up while they're out there, see what they're working on, create that work order now, and have it tied, you know, to that asset for the rest of its history. Um, as opposed to, you know, going back and, because if someone was to ask about one of those work orders that Josette, you know, showed you, if you're talking about a particular section of waterline, you gotta go through and find all those work orders and try to relate those back to that waterline, right, so we're trying to streamline that process. Another thing with the PM piece rolling out to these guys in the field and being able to execute a PM and then move on, is that it really eliminates a lot of those citizen notifications of this stuff, you know, um, because the team is able to capture and document that, fire it off to whoever needs to get there and fix it first, before a citizen even runs over the pothole or notices the, the wet spot, uh, so to speak.
And that's, what you were seeing, as Nate was discussing some of that, this is the mobile app. If they're equipped with iPads, iPhones, Android devices, it doesn't matter which, but this is all the GIS you were seeing just on the, on the website version a second ago. But they have access to all of this information right where they're at.
Does, does public works have company phones, Josette, iPads?
The iPads, yes, the phones, they are, they only have their personal phones.
Okay, but they could have access to it through the iPads?
And, and if we were requiring them, we have paid like a small stipend to require them to use their personal phone to, you know, if they didn't have an iPad, and we could figure that out as well.
I've got a question for Josette, this along the lines of the maintenance program we have now. Take a simple example of an oil change that Rob would do for one of our vehicles, is that data recorded back to us as to when the next oil change is due?
It isn't right now, other than inputting the It isn't right now, other than in putting the, you know, writing it on a sticker or it being in a financial file where we paid for it. That's the kind of missing component, right? It's not tracked anywhere that, hey, this car got serviced three months ago and now needs a new service. It's not, it's not tracked anywhere. It's, I don't know why they never started kind of doing that. Um, but they just, it doesn't exist right now.
So this, um, uh, would be a good solution for that to obtain that data for, or if you purchase a brand new vehicle, you could, you know, you could have your warranties on there listed and everything like that. So.
Yeah. One of the other benefits, which is kind of a weird one, but in 2007, we did not have a ton of the inventory of streets identified. And when we lost the road by Anderson Park sections of it and lost damage, had damage to different streets. We had no way to prove the money and time we'd put into that and able to recoup it back from the federal government. So that's another thing, just documenting how much time and energy and asset money went into fixing certain roads or equipment, then when it, when and if something unfortunate happens, we have documentation of our effort, the time and money that went into something, which would help us recoup it more quickly and not have to go through the trouble of trying to find old documentation on what it cost us or ha, or that it was even existed in the first place. Cause I remember that was the part that was a problem with FEMA is we had no pictures of the road to show it existed. So it was just like, okay, we're kind of stuck. So.
The FEMA example is a great one. Oh, hand up. Their question?
Go ahead, Donnie.
Yeah, more as coming on as a new council person, a little bit of this was discussed and the main part that I took out of this, it was mainly for equipment, maintenance. And then now the kind of throwing a whole bunch more into it that I wasn't aware of. So, it's a bigger package than I was expecting to see tonight.
Well, in the way with, that we recommend rolling this out and you heard Chris say this is a crawl, walk, run approach. So, you know, if we want to stick with just our asset lists and maintenance on, you know, those particular things like fleet vehicles and whatever equipment list you have, you stay with that, right? And then we'll coach you along. And then when you want to start to add maybe the GIS aspect, or maybe water lines become something of concern. I mean, uh, you know, if you put in a new treatment plant, for example, the first thing that they have to do is start to roll out an effective PM program. And that's what we're trying to do here is tie that to these assets. Like what Chris has up in front of you right now is, and I'd be curious about how you guys go about this process now is when you think about replace versus repair. How is that conversation had, right? So right here, he has several different assets with their replacement costs. And then the blue bar is all the work that's been done against those particular assets based on their replacement timeline. What usually happens not, and I don't know how you guys do it is worst is first. Whatever fails first, we replace that or we find the funds to do that. What this does is give some insight to say, okay, here's our asset registry. What's coming up for the future? What have we done work against to say, hey, maybe this air handler needs to go first? Or hey, look at this vehicle that we have and how much we've done against it. Maybe this thing moves to the top of the list. But it's just helping navigate that repair versus replace conversation. A lot easier as well. But like I said, if you want to just start with equipment, you know, we can easily do that because we, we just kind of go and lockstep on what you got, what your guys desires are.
I see that. I see this actually as a really good tool to prepare for your annual budget every year.
So can I just speak to one thing Donnie said? Um, initially Don, Donald, it was, um, I was looking at it from the equipment and the, the, the planned maintenance part. But it's all under asset essentials as the tool package. And so then when we, Ben and I started talking about, well, how do we keep track of where they crack sealed, when they did it? All that stuff. And then talking to Nate, we were like, he's like, well, asset essentials already have that. And you have GIS. And so we saw this whole other component that met a newer discussion topic. Ben and I and Dale and just different people have been having about kind of all this effort we're putting in and tracking the effort. So it just worked out that in discussions, and I've been talking to these gentlemen since mid last year about doing a presentation or some way we could find money to fund us using it. So it's just kind of morphed over time. When we were originally talking about it though, it was just equipment and planned maintenance, kind of kicking out work orders, kicking out a schedule to quit being reactive with our equipment maintenance.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, yeah, I just a lot more into it, but no, it looks like a good asset for us. It just surprised me a little bit and we'll pay more attention and understand more what's going on. Thank you.
Well, and I think too, what we, the way that we implement this is what we do is we sit down with your team and we're going to say, we do it from a consulting approach of what's the main focus right now? So if it is those, that those maintenance task work orders and PM, that's what we start with. And then we'll slowly roll that out till the guys feel comfortable. And then as we move along, we open up those other pieces as, as people request them, you know, people in the treatment plan are going to have different desires than the guys that are out in the field. So we sit down with each one of those teams and say, hey, what does your day need to look like? In terms of how you execute on things. And Josette actually brought up a good point in terms of the FEMA and documentation. Each department also has different needs in terms of the documentation they need to show. Treatment plants, for example, for EPA, right? And we're going to start to customize that workflow for them so that when it's time to report to the EPA, simply go to your dashboard, pull that report, move on, right? And then the same goes with it's capital planning time. Each department has their own needs. So, you know, Chris brought up that one green and red report. What I see a lot of times is, you know, if somebody has a fleet vehicle that they need replaced, they need to justify it, they'll print this out. They'll print out the red bar, blue bar report, and then they'll print out the condition and replacement cost of their asset. Through those three pieces of data, you can tell either this asset needs replaced or it can be pushed back, you know, um, a year or two, based on current data that we have.
Jer.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if, uh, when something pops up for maintenance, how is it alerted? Is it through an email? Is it only one pop up? I'm just kind of curious how that works. Cause once you put all the data in, it's still easy to forget about stuff.
You can get email notifications as well as through that mobile app that we were looking at a few minutes ago. You also have a dashboard, right? So anything that comes up is going to be visible on your dashboard as well. As it comes due or overdue, or if it's a PM, for example, versus reactive. You can configure these dashboards to reflect what's most important to you or to your team. But email as well as that, uh, notification through the mobile app.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, oh, go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, question for Josette. So how brief in has Ben been on into this? Possible procurement? I mean.
Well, um, we discussed that this, this had this capability. That this map asset potentials would have the capability to track the stuff we were looking at. Um, but that was pretty recently. It was after you guys did your measuring and your incremental. So it was after that. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Cause I mean, he's been kind of our, been kind of our guy and I'm always building kind of some stuff on his own, but I kind of want to see his input of, you know, how much of an asset this is, and then maybe having this all in one place is going to make more sense. Looks like it maybe got, you know, it can chart stuff out for us. Uh, you know, we can, you know, it might just make his life a lot easier. I don't know. But I would really value his input.
Yeah, I think it would make his life easier. On the flip side, he might be a little protective of the work he's done, which I don't think this nullifies. Um, I think just it better collaborates. And then, you know, I think.
Well, Ben is GIS, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So the beautiful thing about this is, um, this is just an overlay of information on top of what Ben has built. So it actually doesn't touch or affect anything Ben has done. So Ben can go in and add attribute data and change what he needs on the backend. What this information does, since it sits in asset essentials, it basically only mirrors what all the work he has done. So people in asset essentials can't make any changes or anything like that, but Ben can go into an asset, you know, let's say he created a water line. And now he sees all the work that they've done on that water line. As part of it, and it doesn't really mess up any of the GIS work that he's done. Cause that, you know, that's not easy stuff.
Well, and really this is a kind of different component from what Ben and his GIS platform really is, which is tax map data, county data, all those kinds of property data sets for the city, for the citizens and for all of that. So plus you've got the infrastructure in there, but it won't mess up. Kind of the, I see him as two purposes, right? One's kind of the day to day printing a citizen a map, telling them what the tax zone is, telling them where they can find their tax information or print a tax map or property lines and all that kind of stuff. Still going to remain, this is just tracking the work overlaid on that original. But I think it's some of the work he's been starting. Now we can kind of continue in a more captured version.
I think that's a great way to look at it, Josette. And typically that piece that we see missing with GIS and one of the big reasons people add us to their system is saying, all right, we built all this information out. We're not capturing that day to day portion. So right now everything is tied back to what Ben's doing with the GIS. So I mean, we've, we've found ourselves, and this is something we talk to everyone across the country about. We're capturing so many, so much data that we're not taking the time to learn from it. So this is one of those steps we can help take to say, all right, now let's actually learn something meaningful and move down that path towards wisdom instead of just having it.
I am curious too, how much do you guys go out for things like grants and other, other types of funding?
All the time.
Okay. Cause you know, I, I, so I used to work in Ohio, um, and EPA had a lot of legislation they were pushing that they could prevent or provide some grant funding and things. Based on the information that you had, but you had to have it related to the assets that you had mapped out. Ben's done all this hard work to get this stuff mapped out. So we're just going in and answering the questions of, okay, where's the condition? What is the history? What is the planned maintenance that we have on this particular asset? That's the type of information they want compiled that you can turn in when fighting for that money. Right? Cause that, that pond keeps getting smaller and smaller and there's more and more people standing around it. That's why we actually had the conversation with Josette about the American Rescue Plan is that people are getting money to do infrastructure projects. Now they're starting to think, okay, well, what can we put in place to help us track against that infrastructure? For the remainder of its lifecycle now.
Yeah. If we had this, if we had our infrastructure in this program right now, it would answer some, any questions for us. I mean, just thinking of the East Side Waters situation, uh,
Right.
I mean, I mean, I mean, that's the data we could pull. And then get the engineers to what's this going to cost? And then when that he comes down the pipeline, tap into it. So right now we're probably going to be scratching our heads a little bit as just try to validate exactly what we have and and anybody know when it was put in, you know, I mean, that's, and that's from Ben and I were talking about the roads. I said, we were always like, well, one was just paved. We don't know.
Right.
Oh, well, we got that million dollar loan. We think that's when we did it then, you know, but this is why we've got to have something like this. So it's, uh, it's put down hard and fast. And then, you know, with the experience, we know what our lifespan is. So then we can see projects coming at us. And knowing how big it is coming at us.
And that's the big, you just connected so many dots right there with, with that explanation. And that's the way I look at it is tying the map to the project, right? Because if I'm doing, if we go back to my example here with the address we searched for. If I'm doing this many pavement projects around this park that I have a lot of residents coming to. I mean, that's enough that I'm going to be getting engineering involved to figure out why we have so many issues. So if I can tag all of these to that project, we were just looking at, right? MLK Park, MLK Park Roadwork. That's where we were just looking. So now I could actually run cost against a potential project that maybe we're not even doing yet. I recommend to people all the time, even if it's not a real project, track it as if it were and track your work order cost against it to prove a point, to tell that story.
Yeah. Yep.
I think another piece to this that people use for justification is, you know, if you think about it, we, we always see the things that are going on above ground, right? But we need to have that condition of what's, what's happening underneath. Cause we run into a lot of people that will get money for a project. You know, maybe it's a road overlay. They do a road overlay and then two years later, a water line blows up underneath that road. And now you got to come back and justify, you know, hey, we got to dig this up. Well, didn't, didn't we just get money to, to overlay that road? Yeah, but we didn't, we weren't, you know, fully set on what was happening underneath it. So we're trying to tie it all together. You know, when you're making those decisions on what projects to execute.
Go ahead, Jer.
You know, Joe said, I can see the value in this. It's going to take a few years to really get it started, obviously where it's usable data, but I'm more concerned about training of our public works, getting them on board immediately. Is that what's going to happen? Cause one person in an office or one person behind the door at the police department can't keep track of the whole city. The receipts and do all the impact and all the input data for a department that he or she may not even work in.
No, so I was just planning on using her to put the initial equipment data set in. But, um, see when he was in the page for the create a work order. That transition I see would be pretty seamless from us creating a hard copy work order to us going into this system and creating a work order that gets sent straight to public works. Can you pull that work order section up?
Absolutely. And here's, um, we'll connect some more dots here. This is, somebody mentioned a missing piece earlier, right? And this is the missing piece because there's, there's a lot of ways to catch a fish within this system. So even if I'm not on the work order page, like Josette was alluding to, I can still hit this plus sign on my map and drop a pin and create a work order right from here. And guess what? It pulls in the closest address to where I dropped my pin automatically. Now I can also do this from the work order page. But we see more and more people migrating to this approach and even taking maybe that citizen text that you were talking about earlier and copying and pasting the details right into here. Now it's routed to the appropriate public works team.
Yes, so pu, so us here at City Hall, we're doing work orders for parks, we do work orders for Public Works, for police, for library, if they, Shannon does work orders, if she needs something to go on. So that's kind of a, a thing that we brought on probably four years ago and now we're just used to it. If they see a work order, they know that's in their list and then they return it to us. Just like here, they could act, they could be like complete, they could post it completed, which right now they're all kept in a book, right, a binder of all the work the city's done. Right, deciphering that and, you know, this will capture it where it doesn't need to be in a binder and you can pull out one spot and see all the work that's happened in that area. So it's kind of just a building on what we're already doing, um, and a little bit of Eva going in and getting their initial equipment stuff. It's not the treatment plant, but, you know, all the little stuff. So I see him just, this is our new platform, guys, this is how we're doing it. And it may take a little bit of time, but they'll, they'll work right into it.
Go ahead, Alan.
Uh, question for Josette, currently the work order system, am I correct in assuming that they see that at, at Public Works or do they have to come to City Hall to get the work orders?
So currently they come at ten and two for all their work orders for the day. So they come ten and grab the ones that are up to that point or from yesterday afternoon and then at two, they check in again and grab them if there's some.
So they don't have visibility, is that gonna change with, if we decide to go with this program, they will have it right there at their fingertips?
Yeah, because it would be, it would be on the program that they could access off the app.
Yeah, if, if, if we could make a recommendation, what I would say is that anyone that picks up a phone and takes a call for a work order, basically what they do is they punch it into the system, the guys get a, a notification through text message, email, and then it's in the mobile application that they would have on the iPad, so there's no need to run back to the office.
Yeah.
Um, another big piece that people see about this is they come in for the day, they look at their work of neat, or the work they need to do. They load up the truck with the equipment that they need, so they're not going back and forth. Um, and the, the way we do that is we're gonna sit down and say, what are the routing rules that you need here? If a water main break comes, who needs to be notified? And that workflow, we build into the system, so it goes directly to that person. If something at the treatment plant happens, goes directly to that person. So you have a better way or more efficient way of allocating work to without the team having to run back and grab a list of work orders, you know, to figure out what they gotta go do.
Sounds to me, sounds to me a lot more efficient way of working or doing our business.
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's what we've seen. And, and like I said, I think it's through the way that we implement. Like I said, we're gonna come in, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna take the assets that you already have and get a lot of that into the system. All we need is a rest URL from Ben to get the GIS tied up. And we're seeing teams up and using this in three and a half to four months, full-blown. And what usually happens is we don't get a call for support, we get a call that says, hey, we wanna do this now. How do we do that feature? And with our, uh, lifetime training and support, we basically just log on and we'll show you how to, how to jump in there and add that new tool or, uh, new feature.
And don't forget where we started a lot of this conversation, we've been talking for a while. That PM ratio, right? PM ratios and seeing planned maintenance workload to assign to staff. Those are two reports that you're able to generate very quickly once people are comfortable with the system. That's why I started with those. Your asset reports, the lifecycle reports, we, that we, like Nate mentioned, maybe down the road, we bring parts and consumables or purchases into the equation, right? But we have those deliverables from day one that we wanna get that buy-in and focus on, because those are the ones you can see impact from right away. And then over time, those other reports become a lot more valuable.
Let's talk money.
So I gave you guys that in your emails well, but go ahead, Nate or?
I was gonna say, I, I was trying to look through, do you know, do you have the email that I sent you or?
Yeah.
Basically what we do is we try to customize it to the size of the organization. So we need to sit down, talk through some data points in terms of why you're looking at it for that, Josette. You know, what's the scope of work? What kind of work profiles, workflows do you need? Um, and then we base it, part of that on the population of the city. If you guys be in 2000, you know, you shouldn't be paying the same prices, you know, Portland, Oregon, or something like that. The, the user amount is unlimited at all times, so you don't pay for extra users. And your data is yours, unlimited, all time, so you guys aren't, you know, having to pay for data upgrades or anything like that. You know, I heard that. Go ahead.
Um, I was gonna share my screen, so this was, this, it was $4,000 was the proposal estimate.
Mm-hmm.
And we figured we'd have probably four users that were in the background. $1,000 a user.
What's that? No, that's $4,000 a year on.
No, I know, but Jessica and I talked, we figured we'd have about four, which would be about a thousand dollars per department if we had each, for the cost, that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in our budget, we'd be spreading this out, water, sewer.
Right, police.
Streets.
Right, so the other thing is in that estimate, um, at the, the staff report page of the email I sent you, I'm proposing, and I have not been told we can't do this, but I'm proposing that we, um, basically set aside three years of the cost out of this ARPA money. So.
So I was gonna say, that's one thing that, um, a lot of people will do is they wanna do, cuz we do have, um, there is gonna be uplift every year based on what inflation is. Um, I know that question came up with the, the text, my gov or whatever. And the reason that software companies do the uplift is cuz they're creating improvements in the software and servers and the data. I would be a little concerned if someone says that they don't do the uplift, because that means that the software stays where it's at. But it's, it's something to consider when it comes to SaaS, you know, any kind of SaaS application. But yeah, if you wanted to do a three-year contract, I can get it to where there is no uplift for three years and then you could revisit the inflation three years from now if you wanted to do that.
So where's our data stored?
Your data's gonna be stored on our servers, we have two separate server farms that are on two different tectonic plates. So if one caught on fire and blew up and fell into the earth, the other one still has all your data. You own your data at all times, so if you ever said, hey, we want our data back, we wanna get out of here, we help you get it out into a CSV or exportable file, so you can put it into whatever else you need to. Which is something you don't see a lot.
And the cost of getting out?
None.
Wouldn't this be stored in our cloud service, Joe said also, that we're paying for? Or no?
Well, no, cuz their, their application's stored in their server. The GIS and all the stuff we have in Ben's is in ours.
Yeah.
Overly, so their stuff's in their cloud, our stuff's in ours.
Yeah, and that's what creates that ability for Ben to do whatever he needs to do on his end and doesn't affect us and what we do on our end doesn't affect him, cuz he sits in the Art GIS cloud.
Yeah.
Well, team, that's, that's pretty much all we had to present, is there, is there any outline questions? Or Stephanie, do you have any questions?
I have lots of questions, but I'll address it at a later time.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I think I'm good, Nate, thanks for your presentation, answering our questions. I, I, I think, uh, maybe our next council meeting or something, maybe we can talk to Ben and their public work staff and see how excited they are about it.
Well, and I was just gonna say, I'm, you know, a continued resource for you guys. If they want to do a demo, I'd be more than happy to do a demo for them and get their opinions on it, um, as well as kind of hear how they would envision, you know, things if they, if they use a tool like this too, so. More than happy to do that.
Good.
Thank you, guys. No.
Thank you.
It's great meeting you.
Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely. Y'all, great evening.
I think Donald has a question.
Oh, Donald, please.
Well, with my experience with this modern technology, we need to have more than one person observing it, because people go on vacation, nobody gets the information and it gets lost or somebody quit. You don't move forward, so we definitely need a way to make sure however we route this information, somebody gets it that is on call or working at the time.
Mm-hmm. And what we're gonna do is we'll set up admin roles inside the system, so it can be a failback. You know, if that person is out for the day, other people are getting those notifications. What we would do is talk to your team on what's the most efficient way to do that and then we would set up those routing rules inside the tool. Um, at the same time, that's why we have a 24/7 support in terms of, you know, somebody is out, somebody else needs to use the system, they can give us a call at any time. And you're gonna talk to a human that's gonna walk you through, okay, here's what you need to do on it as well.
Okay, that sounds good, yeah, cuz most of our department's kind of multitask, so it's not just, you know, everybody's working with everybody, not just, you guys are all parks, you are sewer or you're all water. It's a mixed group that does everything.
Right.
So a lot of places out of town don't understand that people can do more than one thing.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank y'all. Awesome, team, thanks for the time.
Thank you guys.
Josette, if any questions come across, please get ahold of me.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, see ya, team.
Okay, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna share my staff report, that was the breakdown of the numbers and money. Okay. Thinking it three times. Okay, can you guys see it? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, uh, this meeting is to have kind of a consensus of what you want staff to bring to your September 20th meeting. And at that meeting, you would direct staff to purchase things or you would direct us to engage with different people or transfer funds. So the, the elements that staff had recommended and we had talked about, um, and this is Public Works and Admin. Um, so money for the trailer for the water purification connects that's housed currently at the county emergency management. Um, we talked about Public Works would like an excellent but used condition excavator, cuz that is something we pretty much routinely hire out, um, any excavation work. A trailer to tow that excavator. They, um, are requesting like a dump truck, for lack of a better term, that can haul five yards that would not require a CDL, because our orange dump truck is pretty much wired together. It's so old and tricky to drive, um, so that was one of their requests. We did look into whether or not we could, um, whether or not we could use it for paving. And because COVID pushed back the timelines that ODAS staff had to return all of our plans, we basically got stalled for a couple months, um, with getting their approvals of the ADA ramps. The criteria, we believe the criteria, we had money for paving, if that's something that interests you. All of these things are if it interests you. Um, we heard about the $43,000 cameras at Spencer. While those are great, we have some concerns about putting something up that potentially will be damaged. I don't know if, um, the cameras at the grandstands, from what I heard from Tim, those kind of, the ones you guys put up took a hit or somebody tried to mess with them, is that true? JR, Rick?
Yeah, they, they, um, damaged one of them. But they, they had to get up, they had to get up inside in the bleachers to do it with a stick, but.
So we are a little bit concerned with putting something so expensive down there. Um, when cameras that we have at Hawkins, at Anderson, at the library, at City Hall, were way more reasonable as a first, we'd rather put in something more reasonable that can capture vandalism. Um, so that's kind of a pitch, you could go either way, you could go the cameras that we put in everywhere else or you could go the Verkata ones that had all the bells and whistles and the license plate reader and all that. So I'm just showing you all the options and if you, if you wanna ignore my face and look on your email, might be easier to read it. So you guys had recommended that we, um, waive the jamboree fees, that was $2,050. We would be putting that into parks and, um, camping. We'd be backfilling those funds where you forgave it using the money. The Habitat for Humanity, I'm still waiting for a definitive answer on forgiving or, uh, letting someone out of SDCs. I have not gotten my definitive answer that we can actually do that. So that's kind of an unknown at this point. So Dude Solutions, I put in if we were gonna get it for three years, um, that would be $12,000. Text my gov if you did the initial year, where, which it was a little bit more at the second and third year, that's about $9,000. Um, I did forget one thing. The $10,000 request for the Small Business Resource Center from Columbia Economic Team, I had it in my minutes. I don't know why I didn't put on the staff report, um, was also one. But you'll see there with the camera system close to what we have, it's about $214,000. If you go with Verkata cameras and everything, it's 254. The amount we have in our bank account that was given to us in this round is 253. So you can either come to some consensus tonight on what you kind of all agree or the items you would like to have on that list. You could take this list home or read it at home and come to the meeting on the 20th and develop the list. Options are totally open to all of it.
Go ahead, JR.
Yeah, I didn't think we had really come to any decisions on most of the things on this list, Joe said. Uh, one thing that does pop out, the trailers, I don't think you have enough money in for those heavy-duty trailers. That's just my guess.
Okay.
And another thing is council had asked about actually helping the people that are impacted by COVID the most, some of our businesses, and you guys were supposed to bring back some information. Unless I've missed it in my email, I haven't seen that yet.
Go ahead, Steph.
So I had reached out to my fellow AMR, oh, recorders um, about how they're using the money and if any of them are using it for small business grants. No one that responded to me is using it for any sort of, uh, relief for small businesses. I think any who were going to do that did that with the CARES Act funding.
So there is the option that you could do that, JR, um, and I can send you the email. There basically, if you give it to small businesses, you have to set up a logistics kind of whole thing for them to prove they were negatively impacted. And then as the municipality, we're gonna have to keep track of that. And I will forward that email to you tonight with that breakdown of what they would expect if we were gonna do that. So I apologize for not sending it with this, but, um, yeah, we have that data on what is required if you were going to, um, benefit local small business.
I just wonder if Columbia County Economics, they talked about helping small businesses. I just wonder if that's something, if people actually contributed to them and let them route through all the paperwork for the businesses because I mean, there's money flooding into all these cities. And COVID didn't affect an excavator or a dump truck. And that's kind of where I'm stuck at is I don't mind getting stuff for the city, obviously, but, uh, it seems like it was supposed to be for recovery for the people most affected by COVID.
The first money, how this, how the feds are using the ARPA Act um, is more infrastructure, tourism, departments that directly dealt with COVID, cleanliness, all that kind of stuff. Um, they do have the element for small business, but the, the main bullet criteria are not that. That doesn't mean you can't do it.
Um, yeah. I read the eight requirements or the eight categories.
Yeah, legitimately, it's kind of a nightmare for us to think about to add on to what we've already got going. Um, but yeah, if some group like a small business resource center was willing to do that, I, I'd have to ask and see if they.
Well, I think, I think it's a conversation maybe with Paul Vogel. If, if there's a way that he's asking for funds just to float the administration. But what if there was funds to actually help businesses or people in Columbia County? And I don't know what options there really is out there for some of the businesses. And here we are going into who knows what the next lockdown. So I'm just hoping we could find a way to actually help the most impacted people in our community. And, and I know it's a nightmare to figure out, but I was hoping for some information back. I just hadn't got any.
Yeah.
So but back to the, back to the trailer thing now, are you talking new trailers? Because we bought a few new trailers lately and a pretty puny trailer is nine, $10,000 anymore.
I actually got those right off a website for the, uh, gross vehicle weight. I need to have them for, for all of it. So I, I could find them for that price, but I could be wrong. But I did look up what will it tow, what will it pull, what's the weight that can handle, all that.
Okay, I just wanted to make, make sure we didn't go light on it, you know?
Yeah, no. Um, that's the other thing that I have a little trepidation about going down the business route, only because I fear the backlash of the citizenry when a subset of that citizenry is the beneficiary. From my perspective, I don't, I'm like worried about the people that will come in and say, you know, oh, Jim, you gave him money, but he just, you know, for his business, but you know, I just, that always is a nightmare to me when you're picking a smaller subset that benefits and not the whole, but.
I understand what you're saying.
But yeah, I can definitely send you that email. And then I can call Paul tomorrow and see if any other agencies have thought of an idea of using them as a kind of logistics manager for that kind of funding.
Well, I thought he had said he'd help people get grants and different, and, and go through some of that stuff, but maybe I'm getting.
Their agency was the one that originally, uh, the Small Business Administration had dumped money in and businesses could apply. Remember that Facebook post they had out like small businesses apply by this date? The Columbia Economic Team did all of that for the county. Because the county got money that came in and then small businesses within the county could apply, but there was like a deadline and they had to get paperwork in. So they, I know they were helpful to the county in administering that. I don't know if anyone's talked to them about this next round though, but I can talk to them.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the Verkata cameras, I probably wasn't gonna vote for that myself. It seemed a little expensive for my taste, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's awesome. If you're like a high-tech, really secure thing that needed all of the, but we just, uh, Tim went in this morning and they pulled it, ripped another paper towel holder off the wall. And it's like, I don't want to put something expensive where idiots are messing with stuff.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to post a police officer down there, it looks like, and catch these little suckers. You got your dealing suit, don't fail.
I was kind of hoping for paintball and we could hide in the bushes and then just the little, when the little rascal comes out, smack him with a paintball and then radio the police, they're wearing neon green paint.
Josette, I'd like to talk about cameras a little bit because just what you said, there's been a, a whole lot of vandalism down there at Spencer Park. Especially this last year. Would the, the cameras that we use at the scout cabin and, and the gazebo in Hawkins Park, would they be sufficient down in that area? Um, around the grandstands and the skate park and, uh, the, uh, play shed area?
Yeah, we, um, Tim had an issue with the gazebo and Eva and I went and reviewed the footage and you can see all of it. I mean, you can see what the kids are doing. You can backtrack to when they pull the garbage bag out of the garbage can and dump all the garbage in the garbage can and steal the bag. Why, I told Tim, just leave a plastic garbage bag on top of the thing so they'll quit stealing it and putting your garbage in the barrel. Um, so yeah, they're, they're really effective. Where we've had them in other places, we have almost no vandalism.
So $3,000, $3,000 is quite a bit different than $45,000. And how, how many cameras would, um, we could buy for $3,000?
For the, the set of 10?
For $3,000?
10 cameras in the unit pack. And then there was about $700 of electrician time to wire stuff. So that's, um, what we did, like the library and Rhodes Avenue building was pretty reasonable. Wasn't is, you know, you can read a license plate or use it that in court for someone driving on the street, but right in the area, you can see who it is, what they're doing, what color their shirt is, all of it.
Well, that, that system that we have at Hawkins would sure make a lot of sense for me down at Spencer and be well worth it. So.
Yeah.
Um, so this is the first time I've seen that list, Josette, so.
Yeah, I just took what we had talked about and then what some requests are, were from staff and just so you kind of had it in your brain. Um, and if you chose not to go for the, so we were seeing this 100,000 as potentially the 2022 paving that we didn't get to apply for. But it could be you guys decide something different. These are just kind of things we discussed and prices associated, so. We can put it on the 20th agenda, you know, ARPA funds discussion. And you guys can come and hash it out and then direct staff to do whatever.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions on the list?
So I'm gonna edit the list. I'm gonna add the resource money and I'm gonna add a question mark about the small business beneficiaries. And then I'll resend it just the list without all the other documents. So you can think about it.
So we'll, we'll bring it to, uh, the 20th council meeting under unfinished business then.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else for tonight? Thank you for attending and, um, thank you for all the information. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:55. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.